Welcome to the Biloxi City Council Meeting of May 5th, 2020. I believe we have Pastor Crowley from the Wool Market Baptist Church. If you would, Mr. Pastor Crowley, if you would, lead us in the invocation.
Father, we're indeed grateful for all the blessings you have because you love us so deeply. Lord, we're living in difficult times and none of this has taken me by surprise. Tonight, Father, I just want to lift up this council, our mayor, also our governor, governors of other states, our president, those who are making difficult decisions in difficult times, Father, I pray for their wisdom. Your word tells us that if we lack wisdom, we can ask, and you'll give it to any and to all, and you do that without partial out. Father, tonight, we all need wisdom for every day, but for the decisions that are made in difficult times, where we especially need to practice. So I thank you for these council members, for our mayor, for other staff here in our city. Pray your blessings upon them each and every day as they lead us to guide our city tonight as they make decisions. Father, we know this is a very difficult day, also as we remember a year ago, Lord, there are things going on tonight to remember that. Lord, we thank you that you have walked through this journey with family and with the greater family of this city. And, Lord, we ask you, Father, know that we love you, and we're here to serve you and to serve each other. So help us not to miss a single opportunity to do what Jesus would have done when he was here on earth, to love others, serve them with all our hearts. Thank you, God, for your blessings. Thank you for your Son, Jesus, and in his name we pray.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Crowley. It's almost as if you've done this for 25 years or something. Chief Miller, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
We do have some additions. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules?
I do. I move.
Motion to suspend the rules by Councilman Lawrence, seconded by Felix Gines. Read the additions, please. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. It is six zero.
and approving the sale of GO bonds. We're also substituting and adding a second exhibit to item 4D, resolution authorizing and directing the issuance of the bonds.
Council President, we'd also like to pull late-breaking item 5E, and we'll put it on the next agenda.
We'll remove 5E from the consent agenda. Do we have any discussion about the additions or the removal?
I move as amended.
And I'll second it.
We have a motion to accept the agenda as amended by Paul Tisdale, I mean, excuse me, by Councilman Lawrence, seconded by Felix Gines. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We will begin with the presentation agenda. Mr. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to express to Austin McKeithen, his wife, and his family, his friends, his brothers and sisters, what we feel as a family. So, as if it were yesterday, we'd remember that.
So I would offer this on behalf of the city of Biloxi, this proclamation. Whereas Biloxi Police Department tragically lost Officer Robert McKeithen in the line of duty, May 5th, 2019. Whereas Officer McKeithen was beloved husband and father, Air Force veteran, a public servant who was with the Biloxi Police Department for 24 years before his life was suddenly taken while on duty. Officer McKeithen dedicated his life to the job and to his community. He lost a tragic, his loss is a tragic reminder of the dangers of police officers face daily in their profession, which is to serve and protect something McKeithen did proudly. Whereas McKeithen is remembered by his family, friends, fellow brothers and sisters in the booth and this community, and this community for selfless dedication and bravery and his
Let me continue. Let me ask to spread the travel card expense to the minutes, Biloxi travel expense card
devotion to maintaining peace and security in our community.
to the minutes. We do, as Michael's mentioned, we have a couple of folks here to help us, Jason and
Officer Robert McKeithen was a fine Biloxi police officer who's deeply missed.
Janie, with regard to the trigger I think we pulled, or we're gonna pull, with regard to refinancing operation. Again, we've been in the midst of figuring out how we can move step by step.
Now therefore, I Andrew Fofo-Gilich, Mayor of Biloxi, Mississippi, do hereby recognize
I've provided a few pieces of data that we've running, you know, the running 14-day average
this service, his service, and honor, dedication, and memorialize the man, the father, the
on where we are as a coast, as a Harrison County, to figure out where we'll go to the
brother, and the public servant who Biloxi was proud to hail.
next step.
Thank you so much.
Some of those plans that we've been engaged with was, of course, President Trump's Open Up America Again and the Governor's directives as far as his executive orders. Now, I think everyone will be receiving those preparations in the mail by Thursday. So it's our intent, when the numbers roll out, we'll take it to the next steps. And that's some of the numbers that we've been accruing, represents the whole month and a half of data, new events, our new positives as we go, as we roll through. And I think the mall is open today with about 30 stores, right? And Thursday is the date on the restaurants. We've had, you know, a number of meetings with the number of sectors in the business community, some things that may have been not stressed specifically, but I know the folks at the retail end of the ballgame, the mall and the restaurants understand this contact tracing is a big thing to enable the ability for our contact tracers, tools that could be dropping out of systems without an effort to accrue this. We're not asking a lot of folks to do things that cannot be derived, so the contact tracers, when a hotspot pops in again, they'll have a little bit of tool to go forward, to actually isolate and bring those positives or those contacts or possible positives, put them in a quarantine mode, so we won't take a major step back. We don't have to shut a whole industry down if we can address the persons or places and the cross-sections that a positive person may have, you know, encountered. That's the intent. I think the folks that we did meet with in the two retail got it, understood what needs to be done. Of course, a big thing that was made today in today's meeting with the mayors, teleconference meeting with hair salons and barber shops, and, you know, the point that was made when we did have a meeting with them, that that is not what it seems. Being shut down causes backdoor kinds of opportunities to spread the virus. So I think it's incumbent upon us to get a handle on the, you know, the cosmetology board, or there are actually boards that control those sanitations and things that we would defer and they would defer. So I know they would have a list of questions that we'd ask for their clients and the people, especially in the close-contact kind of arena, that they would require, the temperatures, you know, have you had a fever, those kinds of things. If you had any of those in a positive way, they would ask you not to come. And along those lines, I think that's what would be in a number of places where we could address our influence to the opening. I know the restaurants and the churches are having, ready to go, and I think everybody wants to return to both of those places. And that's about it. I think, Mike, have I forgotten anything? Those guidelines, the hair salons, the churches, the barber shops, and the refinancing things that we're gonna do to enable us to recover a little bit, at least a little bit of what we've, you know, gonna lose. And with that, I mean, I'll entertain any questions if you have any.
I think you forgot Mike. You asked Mike if I forgot anything. There's no Mike.
Anyway. Mike's got the question. Okay, go get him.
George, do you have any questions?
Yeah, let me get this straight. Are the barber shops and the salons gonna be open?
No, no, not till the governor. Again, in conversation, that's what was surprising, last week, we had conversation with the governor's office and actually Dr. Dobbs had interacted with the mayor, Dr. Demetropolis from Pascagoula. The governor was at that point in time, this was last Friday, hesitant to open up by region, you know, for outdoor dining or indoor dining. So it was a surprise when the governor said, you know, go forward with the, because he had a big spike, I think, Sunday, that said, let me step back. That happened Friday, I guess it was, wasn't it? The big, anyway, basically, we were pleasantly surprised that he was able to go forward with at least the restaurant part of the deal. But the barber shops and salons are not on the radar. The bars that don't serve, they have no entertainment or have no food, they're closed. And right now, the hair salons and the barber shops and the nail salons are very close-contact sport, are not gonna be there, at least right now.
I don't go to the beauty parlor or the nail thing, but have three daughters.
I never would have guessed.
I have three daughters.
Oh, no.
I have three daughters that do that. But I'm just saying, they sanitize every time they go. They've always done that. I mean, they probably the cleanest people you could deal with.
Yeah.
Because that's what they do. Once you get your hair done, they clean out that thing for the next person.
Some of the things that popped out in, you know, what the big cities that, like Atlanta, you know, there are some rules that they understood, no blow drying. So whatever, if anything was in the air, you know, it would stir it up. So I think that whole, at least in connecting with some of the friends of the friends, you know, all the Atlanta Sky has 450 beauty employees, no blow drying. So that was not, you know, unheard of as far as, you know, people want to get in, they want to get their clients in and out. So we're not engaged in any kind of rule setting or anything, but we, you know, we understand their anxiousness to get rolling again, and, you know, people need to go do those things.
You know, every time you do one of them's hair, the next person's gotta have all the air cleaned, everything gotta be cleaned before you do the next person's hair. So even the lady that does it.
Just like the tables, just like turning over the tables.
It looked like to me that would be some of the easiest people to open, because they're strictly one-on-one, they're not on top of each other anyway. You know, the nail and the beauty parlor.
Well, they have reservation systems too, and those questions, I mean, actually, literally, the questionnaire you saw, Rob, weren't you there, that you would actually relieve that operation of reliability, because you've answered this, you know, in a positive way, you hadn't, you know, had any of the obvious symptoms.
I mean, you talk about all, you're talking about the contacting people, if you pay by a check or you pay by a credit card, they can follow you anyway. So you're talking about somebody signing up somewhere?
No, not really, not really. We wanted, you know, if, like museums, that was talked about museums, people sign in anyhow as a matter of, so some of those reservation systems or sign-in sheets that were not demanding, but it would be helpful if you could reproduce, if somebody was in your operation, who else was in your operation at that timeframe?
So like the restaurants would be 50% and they could all, so eat outside?
Yeah.
In the patio?
Yeah, up to 20 in a.
Everybody wants to make sure they're clear and they follow the rules, you gotta have all the rules out there, so they know what they're doing.
Well, you can't have all the rules, because it's a moving, it's a moving deal. I mean, it's an adjusted plan. So that's what we tried to do in releasing what we had. So when those triggers are open, this is what we have. But, you know, it's a moving target. If we find things that, we don't know all the hoops and channels people can take, and we've seen that on the beach, you know, we've actually addressed, I think, a couple of places that read something or somebody said something and they're on, you know, oh, well, the governor said we could do it. Well, the governor's leaving up to the local authorities, the local government, when they see something's wrong, you can put more stringent plans, but not less of those restrictions in place. The governor made that pretty clear.
And the last time you met with them, we pretty much doing what they saying, we're going by the steps now?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mast Marotta over there?
Oh, yeah. Sure. Was it Matt with you?
He's sitting in Paul Tisdale's seat, so I'm assuming it is Paul Tisdale.
I'm the mast singer. Nothing, I have no report, thank you.
Councilman Glavine?
Yeah, Mayor, I kinda want to clarify the parks, and we said we're gonna open those during certain hours, no more than 20, is that what I understand?
No more than 20. You know where, Councilman, where this is gonna get real dicey, is the baseball, softball fields.
I noticed the Auberville is putting something out, Mayor Quayve issued some kind of statement that they're.
We are, we are opening our baseball and softball fields, but we're not gonna open them all, because part of the problem we've got is we've got the clean bathrooms between people, we've gotta wipe things down.
Right.
We don't have the staff to be doing that for all the baseball parks and all the softball parks all at once. The other thing about baseball and softball, which we're gonna try and be sure is followed, is if the limit is 20, it's pretty hard to have a game. You can have a practice, kinda hard to have a game.
That's what the, he was pretty specific about that.
Listen, anything, it'd be great to get those boys out there and work on their skills.
We've given direction to the Parks Department to have the parks open and have the playing fields open on Thursday, starting Thursday.
But again, no, no, just practice, no scrimmage games or anything like that. Literally, the governor was pretty specific about that. May I ask about tennis, tennis courts?
Tennis?
I've been deluged for the last month.
Football.
What's that?
Pickleball, especially. There would be no reason why tennis and pickleball courts couldn't, couldn't be open. Because, I mean, you're talking about pairs at best, playing twos and twos, and they're spread out. Tennis by nature, it keeps you spread out, put a fence between them.
So would we begin to open our tennis courts for that?
We can.
Okay, starting about when? Can you?
It would be a lot easier if we did this effective Monday, but we're gonna try and get as much open as we can starting Thursday. The governor doesn't give us permission to do this till Thursday. The, one of the.
Then we need time.
One of the odd ones that we hear an awful lot about, because the people apparently really like this, and that's the disc golf thing at Miller Park. And we'll be out putting that whole course back together again tomorrow, so it'll be ready tomorrow.
Okay. All right, thank you. Appreciate that.
So, yeah, so to reiterate what the mayor was saying, we went to, for two reasons, we put this thing out. We put this out because we wanted the proprietors of different businesses to know what was coming and be prepared, what they had to do. And we also wanted the governor and the governor's staff to see that we were ready. And this has made it up there, they've got it. They know it's Biloxi's, and then we know Biloxi's ready, and got a set of rules to abide by, so we're not making it up as we go along.
I think that was distributed to everyone in the MML, she already visited today, mentioned it, gotten that, and so it's in their hands and for adjustments to be made.
That's it.
Councilman Gines?
Yes, I see the McKeithen family's gone, I wanted to thank them for their service from the fellow Airmen. I wanted to ask the mayor, would he consider a social distance monitor, maybe for the city? I know that there are some areas that are, you know, we don't have a lot of people working now, I mean, a lot of lax time, downtime, to maybe consider training, and of course, we're talking proper training, to social distance monitors. I get a lot of calls from different companies and different groups, like in the park, at least to give people a warning, some kind of a warning to let people know that we need to kind of spread this out. They call me and they expect me to go and break it all up. Well, you know, that's not what I do. And if we would consider maybe getting a monitor or two that could, you know, scan the city, if they are, or maybe just check out some areas, if, kinda like a code enforcement, to check out areas that are broader up. If you got a business where you have too many people there, you could at least give them a warning, citation, not trying to take anybody to jail or anything like that, but just mainly to try to make sure we follow the rules properly.
I don't have an issue with that. I think the police department's been doing a fine job when we give them a heads-up as far as, you know, some people jumped the gun the other day as far as retail, and right around the corner, and, you know, it was, you know, kinda shut down. They voluntarily, you know, understood, but they thought that, you know, the governor said, take off, you know, but that's not the case. And, no, I wouldn't have any objection to designating someone as those kinds of things, those kinds of duties to take care of, but we gotta be careful on, you know.
Right, right. I mean, yeah, and I feel like there's a way to do it. I didn't want to affect law enforcement.
No, that's right.
Because they have a tough job by itself.
But, you know, again, what's important is that we not step, make a step backwards in those kinds of incidents, those kinds of people that don't get it, you know, and it's every, you know, nook and cranny, every, you know, you can see it everywhere, and.
Right.
So I have no problems with doing that. We just want to make sure we don't take a step backwards when it comes to this new outbreaks, all right, any hot spots.
Right, and of course, you know, we know the things that are going on around the country, so we have to be very careful, someone that's properly trained to deal with people the right way. I wanted to ask Walter, Walter question about any traction yet on the Bullin Street sidewalk, is that, how's that moving along?
Counselor, if you're referring to the, those streets we had, they're part of contractors, part of Magnolia this week.
This week, okay, cool, cool. And if at all possible, now that things are starting to move forward, yourself, myself, the mayor, kinda make the, our bi-weekly meetings again for Oscar Renda, because according to the email she sent, they're wrapping up, and of course, I have a lot of questions about what they're saying.
Okay, thank you, thank you. That concludes my report.
Councilman Barrett?
Just two things. One, with it being the anniversary of Officer McKeithen's death, I had, I know I'd mentioned it to Mike, I'd talked to Connie about naming the new library, the, after them, after him, and just if we can, I know that we're getting close on that building out there, so when we get that finished, if we could, you know, make that part of the ceremony, to get a plaque out there and name it the Officer McKeithen Memorial Library, that would be awesome. And that's really all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Barrett. Councilman Tisdale?
Yeah, the mayor was talking about guidelines, and Councilman Gines mentioned a few things related to that, and so did Mr. Glavine Sports Facilities. It just brought to mind something years ago that I read that I've found pretty much to be true. And there are three reasons why things that should get done, don't get done. One is, I didn't know I was supposed to do it, okay? And I'm thinking of the guidelines that the city's put out, and basically, here you go, this is what we expect you to do, okay? And they're guidelines, they're not ordinances. The next thing is, I don't know how to do that. I'd have done it if I knew how to do it. Well, it's pretty much spelled out for you exactly what you have to do, and I can understand, and I think most people would understand how they're supposed to do what we expect them to do. Then the third reason that things don't get done that should get done is, I just don't want to do it. So we have, and I've found this to be true in my previous line of work, and I'm sure if you think about it, you found it to be true, probably with members of your own family. Clean up your room, right? But we're in a situation, as a tourist town, that we want as many people to come here as possible. We want to keep people as healthy as we can, not just the people who live here, but our guests who come to visit us. And we're more likely to do that if we follow those guidelines, but it can't be 80% of us following the guideline. We need everybody following those guidelines. You've gotta do that if, I think, if you want to have a great place to come and play or work or visit or game or swim on the beach or something, you just really have to commit yourself to following those guidelines. They're all pretty reasonable, I think we'd agree. My only concern is, and I've got somebody checking with the Mississippi Department of Health, is this contact tracing. I understand how it's supposed to work, but I also know that you need people who are trained as tracers, and of course, somebody's gotta pay them. I don't know how that's gonna work. I think we're waiting from the state on that. I believe they got some federal money to help with that, but.
No, I'll give you an update on what we've done. We've talked with Jim Craig, who is the governor's man when it comes to contact tracing, Dr. Demetropolis has talked with Dobbs himself, what Craig had told us in a telephone interview, that they, within the department, and again, keep in mind, last week, Governor Edwards in Louisiana hired 75 contact tracers. Well, the state of Mississippi has 95 that they pulled from within the ranks of the State Health Department, who have regular jobs, but they have been in a training mode, he said they're gonna have to go back to their regular jobs, but that was encouraging that they have 95. We were trying to offer these tools that we could possibly have, and, you know, they were, you know, they've never been, never thought of that. The other thing, as far as contact tracing, Mayor Bloomberg is in the process of hiring 100,000 of those folks across the country. So, you know, it's something that will be, you know, I guess, ramped up and looked at, and any tools that we could do without costing anybody any time or effort or money, you know, I think that would be a.
And hopefully, we would, we would never need that down here on the coast, but I just want to really press on the point that we all have a role to play.
Yeah.
And let's just play our part well, and we'll be much better off in the long run. And you know, and I know, you're probably already thinking of a knucklehead who says, I'm not gonna do that, I don't care what they, what they say, what they're gonna do, they have to put me in jail. Nobody wants to put anybody in jail, we just want you to do the reasonable thing so we're all safer. That's all, thank you.
Having said that.
Thank you, Councilman Tisdale. Lastly, a couple of things. I guess the pastor left, I want to thank him again for his invocation and being here today. With regard to Officer McKeithen, I know he suggested naming the library, and I don't disagree with that, that's, I think, for the city's.
We have some thoughts that, you know, we'd like to address, but we'll keep everyone involved.
One thing I just, I just want to express my thought on that, is that we have other men and women that have fallen in the line of duty, and I would suggest maybe rename the Public Safety Building, something like the Fallen Officers Public Safety Building or Fallen Heroes, and then we can memorialize each one of their names on that building as well. You know, I think there's a lot of families that have suffered, and Officer McKeithen's family as well, which is the most recent. Other than that, down to business, I know we awarded the contracts for some paving in my ward on the last, in the last meeting, and we're waiting for the pre-construction meeting to determine the dates for starting. Do we know when that pre-construction meeting is?
You're asking for the Ward 4 paving?
Yes.
I don't have that, but I'll, you'll have it first thing in the morning. I know they're trying to set that meeting up.
Okay, thank you, just so I can keep my guys informed, and girls.
Hold on.
It's 2020, I don't want to offend anyone.
to do the reasonable thing so we're all safer. That's all. Thank you. Having said that.
Thank you, Councilman Tisdale. Um, lastly, a couple of things. Uh, I guess the pastor left. I wanna thank him again for his invocation and being here today. Um, with regard to Officer McKeithen, I know he suggested naming the library, and I don't disagree with that. That's, I think, for the cities.
We have some thoughts that, you know, we'd like to address, but we'll, we'll keep everyone involved on that.
One thing I just, I just wanna, um, express my thought on that is that we have other men and women that have fallen in the line of duty, and I would suggest maybe rename the public safety building, something like the Fallen Officers Public Safety Building or Fallen Heroes. And then we can memorialize each one of their names on that building as well. You know, I think there's a lot of families that have suffered, and, um, Officer McKeithen's family as well, which is the most recent. Um, other than that, down to business, I know we awarded the contracts for some paving in my ward on the last, in the last meeting, and we're waiting for the pre-construction meeting to determine the dates for starting. Do we know when that pre-construction meeting is?
Are you asking for us the, uh, Ward Four paving?
Yes.
Uh, I don't have that, but I'll, I'll, you'll have it first thing in the morning. I know they're trying to set that meeting up.
Okay, thank you. Just so I can keep my guys informed, and girls.
Hold on.
It is twenty twenty. I don't wanna offend anyone, and those that don't associate as guy or girl. Um, that'll conclude my report. This'll take us to public, um, agenda, citizens' comments. Did we have anything? Did we receive anything at all? Okay, policy agenda then? Resolution A, Lucy?
Resolution, appointing Richard C. Schmidt Jr. to the Board of Biloxi Public Schools.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Having motion by Paul Tisdale, a second by Felix Gines. Discussion, Councilman Tisdale?
Uh, yes, sir. Just, uh, good man, good family. Um, that's it.
Councilman-
Wants to do it.
Councilman Gines?
Exactly.
Just changing Schmidt for Schmidt.
It's the same old Schmidt. Any other discussion on the board? There being none, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Uh, Barrett was out of the room. Resolution B?
Resolution, authorizing engagement of Wise Carter Child and Care Way as bond counsel.
Got a motion by Councilman Lawrence?
I'll second it.
Second by Paul Tisdale. Councilman Lawrence, discussion?
You wanna break all that down for us, Mike?
Well, the talent is here. Jane Menardi, representing that law firm, is here. This might be the right opportunity just to let her give you a little lead-in about what's about to happen to us on these bond refis. Can I call her up?
Thank you.
Please?
Ms. Menardi, if you would?
Short version, to save your money.
Thank you.
Ms. Menardi, if you would, state your name and your title for the record?
Yes. Jean Menardi with Wise Carter Law Firm. Um, my address is four five seven Carmarthen Biloxi, Mississippi. Um, you all remember back in November and in March, you authorized the administration to go out and refund the Series 2014 paving bonds. And we think we have a, we got a proposal for those at a very good interest rate. We have not signed, sealed, and delivered that one because we're still haggling. Sorry, I don't wanna get too close to it. Um, we're still haggling over a few details. But in the meantime, um, in the meantime, Mr. Leonard was, um, asking the placement agent to, to find someone to buy a refunding of the stadium bonds, which are currently outstanding at interest rates between three and a half and four point seven percent. And they have lined up three buyers to refund those bonds, and the savings on that are in absolute terms, a little bit over a million, and in present value terms, I think nine hundred and something thousand dollars. So they have done a real good job getting that lined up. But the resolutions that are on the table tonight are to give us authority to issue refunding bonds to refund most of the maturities of the outstanding stadium bond. And to sell those bonds within the parameters that we talked about with the last bonds and that are required under the Refinancing Act, you've gotta have two percent net present value savings. And I think what they've negotiated gives us six point four six percent present value savings. So that is a, a great savings for the city. Um, so we've asked for the general authority to negotiate and sell those bonds and to issue those bonds, but we've also asked for the specific authority to sell it to the three buyers that they've lined up, and those commitment letters are attached to Resolution Four C, I believe. But if something happens to one of those, if one of those backs out, we can still go out and find another buyer.
Ms. Menardi?
Um, we can, we can name the banks that have agreed to buy the, um, stadium refunding bonds. One of the issues we're having on the, on the other deal is that bank was asking us to keep the terms confidential. And I explained to them, there are very few things the city council can keep confidential, and I don't think general obligation bonds are one of them. So, um, we need to fix that, but we expect they're gonna come back and be okay with that.
They're all local banks?
Yes, yes. And on the stadium bond, the bank taking the biggest piece is Peoples. They're taking about ten million. And, um, on your exhibits to four C, I can't remember who the other-
Sixty-nine.
The first is taking five million, and then there's a bank in Belzona that I'm not real familiar with that's taken a piece of the stadium bonds. Guarantee Bank, I think of Belzona.
Ms. Menardi, can I ask you a question? The, when you say we have a absolute savings of one million and a present value savings of nine hundred thousand, is that savings above and beyond the cost for the bond counsel and its, for its fees and costs?
I believe so, but I didn't do the math on this one. Um, Jason?
Thank you.
See, one other thing I think is a good thing, the expiration date's the same, isn't it?
The final-
They still expire at the same time, so you're saving, like, you're saving four hundred thousand, one and a million on oven roughly, give or take. So that's good, and you're doing the same date. That's, that's, that's pretty good savings.
And they've also shown us the cash flow analysis. So we're, um, I think we have every year cash flow. Yes, immediate, I think. Yes, and this is a good time to have cash flow savings.
And the rates are great. I was just wondering, XMA, we had four or five more that we could do. Both of them, maybe sell them and put them all together and save a bunch of money. That's just pretty, that's pretty low. One point nine five, that's, that's low money.
Yes, those are taxable.
Yeah, okay.
Do we have any other questions on the council? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Let's see if you read C, please, four C.
Resolution, authorizing and approving the sale of the GO bonds.
It's a move.
Second.
Have a motion by George Lawrence, seconded by Paul Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence, discussion?
No, I think we, we covered everything. These all pretty much run together.
No discussion from Councilman Tisdale. Is there any other discussion on the board? There being none, I'll call for a question. All in favor, signal with the raise of your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Lucy, if you would, Resolution D, please.
Resolution, authorizing and directing the issuance of the GO bonds.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawrence, seconded by Kenny Glavine. Discussion, Councilman Lawrence?
No discussion.
No discussion from Councilman Lawrence. Councilman Glavine?
Um, any, I mean, any comment you wanna let the council know what this is gonna do? Any additional comments?
No.
That you've already stated?
Good. This is very similar to the bond resolution you did for the paving bonds.
Okay. Uh, I do have a question regarding this, since it's, uh, regarding the stadium. Is there any chance, are we, do we have any discussions about any deferrals or any, uh, thing moving forward?
Deferrals?
Deferrals for any payments, the principal payments on it?
Essentially, what this does is it's gonna change your payment stream and, and lessen it.
Understand that. Yeah, I was just wondering if, if there were any programs to kinda give us some relief, uh, you know, kinda pushing it back like, um, like you would a traditional mortgage they've been doing, yeah?
Um, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Um, and if we did, and if it were like the forbearances on mortgages and on rent, you would still owe that money. It would just pile up. And right now, the interest rates are minuscule in historic terms. And so it's hard to imagine we find a better time to do this. That said, I don't predict rates.
I'm sure they're gonna be sniffing where, not just Biloxi, they're probably sniffing all over the nation, but, uh-
In fact, our placement agent had a webinar that I sat through a week or so ago, and they said the first places they're looking at are the nursing homes. Um, but they're, they're getting around to tourist towns, so.
All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the council? There being none, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Have a motion by Paul Tisdale?
Second.
Second by Felix Gines. Councilman Tisdale, do you have any discussion?
Not a one, thank you.
Councilman Gines, do you have any discussion? Any discussion on the consent agenda?
Oh, me? Oh.
Yeah. No? Councilman Glavine?
Done.
Councilwoman Newman? Councilman Lawrence? Well, hold on. Forgive me. I withdraw that request. Councilman Barrett?
So on, um, G and H, I guess they sort of go together. The difference, we already had the original amount in the budget. The difference is just twenty-three thousand dollars, is that correct?
That's correct. The, uh, earlier, twenty-fourteen resolution improved our setting aside two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, uh, as our match.
Okay.
When the grant agreement finally came to us, four years later, five years later, it was twenty, two, two hundred, two hundred and seventy instead of two hundred and fifty. The money is, was spent, it's set aside. It's coming from the Economic Development Security Fund.
Okay.
And of course, there would be a requirement to pay it back at some point.
So that two fifty has been set aside? It's not something, okay.
It has. It's, it was, it, basically, we put a little imaginary fence around that.
So we just, two hundred, are we just twenty-three thousand is what it's gonna cost us, basically, adding to this year's budget?
And we have, we have two years to finish the platform, the rail platform. So we're not in a hurry. We'll wait and see what happens.
All right, that's it. That's all I have.
Councilman Lawrence, do you have any discussion on the consent agenda?
I was gonna check about that rail. I mean, being Cinco de Mayo Day, you know, we had to ask a question about something. We didn't have a party afterwards, or what? Margaritas? A margarita bill over there, Kenny Junior? You know? Nobody even mentioned that, did you?
No, they didn't.
Yeah. That's all right, one way. So we start calling you Magnolia.
Magnolia Street.
I, actually, it would be more appropriate that we were wasting away in Coronaville.
Too soon, Mike, too soon.
Too soon. Come on, you're, you're out of there.
I have no discussion on the consent agenda, all in favor. Motion carries unanimously, being that we have nothing for code enforcement or, do we have anything on the routine agenda? Nothing at all? Is this?
Just a, well, just a routine agenda.
Just, there's nothing on the routine agenda?
No.
I have nothing listed, so there's nothing to move. Um, he's looking at his books. I'm verifying, I've never seen this.
Sorry, never mind.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make that motion to recess.
Thank you. Motion to recess by Councilman Tisdale, seconded by Felix Gines. All in favor, signal with the raise of your hand. Motion carries unanimously, we're recessed.
Good job.
No bills to pay? What's going on? I haven't had bills to pay.